October 18th, 2022. So again, this is a hybrid meeting, which is a format which would continue most likely for a long time here. Members of the public are welcome to say in person or remotely. In person, we are at the Public Library in the Community Room at 68 East Main Street. You can join online via video using the Zoom link posted in meeting agenda or through the Zoom app using meeting ID 6389391060. There is also a dialing number. You can prefer to join by phone directly. The meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access and available for replay on the Norton Media Center YouTube page in the coming days. Again, to further assist with the hybrid meeting format, please feel free to email questions for the board ahead of the meeting in future sessions to Brian Carmichael seated to my right, and we will make sure to read any of those into the record in case people are not able to attend a specific meeting. So just to close out on that, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that one option for remote attendance and/or participation is being presented, provided as a courtesy to the public and board members. The meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt a virtual broadcast unless required by law. So with all of that out of the way, which I have almost memorized at this point after repeating it so many times, we do have, we do want to set some further meeting dates, but I'll save that a little bit for the end of the session. In terms of additional planning board business and policies, for anybody who was not at town meeting last night, there was a petition zoning article at the meeting, which we saw, which was the adjustment to the Solar Bylaw. That petitioned article was not passed. Also not passing were proposed changes to the nominations to the Finance Committee, which would have impacted this board had it passed. So thank you for everybody who was at town meeting, and we're back here again, back here at it again the next night. Brian, do we have any bills or warrants to review?
We have one. We have this Horsey-Witten review for Pine Street.
Okay. Okay. So we have a peer review account for Horsey-Witten. Again, so it's a, please take a look at that bill if you so choose and pass it along, and I'll sign it at the end of the session. We don't have any minutes to approve at this time, but Brian, I know you're starting to work through some of the, some of them here, but you have many other things on your plate. With that out of the way, I'll dive into the first item on our agenda here, which is a review and sign off of the plan set for a special permit number 490. We had signed, this was discussed at our previous meeting, and we signed the cover sheet of the plan set. The owners of the project have requested that the board sign every page of the plan set. To that end, I asked for confirmation that there are no changes from the original plans that were approved, and we have that in writing, which Brian provided via email. We have a paper copy here if anybody would like. Maybe I'm being paranoid, but I viewed it as we will sign a cover sheet. That's fine. I don't want to be signing a specific page on a specific plan unless there's proof that it's the exact same plan that was approved, so that nobody pulls the page up and says, "No, you signed this." So call me a hero, call me a cynic. That's why I asked Brian to get the letter, and thank you. So we have the plan set here. Obviously, it's not small, so if we stopped everything and had everybody do it, it would probably take us about half an hour of everybody sitting here watching us twiddle our thumbs, which probably isn't the best use of our time. So does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments before I start passing this down? And we can kind of sign as best we can as we go throughout the evening. Hopefully, it doesn't turn into the reason that we're still here at the end. No questions, comments? Okay. So if you want to pass me the plan set. This may qualify as a deadly weapon. Not sure. But yes. I'm not sure what the best location is for this in terms of how we want to do this, but I'll try and let everybody try and do this as best we can. If we want to do it on the table behind Alan, we can do that. Obviously, that does take you away from your seat and the microphone, but we will do, work through the giant set of plans as best we can throughout the evening. And thank you in advance for the effort. I do have additional pens here if anybody would like. With that out of the way, the next item on our agenda is the continuation of a public hearing for definitive subdivision plan 13932 and special permit 14704. That is for 0126, 128, and 154 Pine Street and 0 Wood Road, the Northern Land Company. Just continued to be in a few times, but see Bob and Xenith here, so if you'd like to come up and get your easel set up, then we can get ready to discuss what's happened since we saw you last.
Thank you.
Six more people to sign that, so it'll be a while.
Was that before I was on the board that that was approved? Is that something I should have stayed from more?
I know everyone did approve it except Bill Woodstein.
Okay, because he was the owner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the, no, not.
At least you're standing on the waiting river.
Okay.
So I'm just saying.
Okay.
Okay. So Bob, if you could just, I think, provide an overview of what changes have taken place since we last saw you, since it's been a little while?
It has, yes.
And go from there. I don't believe that we have an updated plan set at this time, correct, Brian?
We do.
I mean, we had.
September 7th.
September 7th.
That's the last set.
That's the last set. Okay.
So since the last meeting, we have appeared, you may recall, I had to review all of this stuff today too, but you may recall you sent us some with a, with a long list of items that we needed to address, and what we did is we put together the response letter addressing all of Horsey-Witten's comments. Associated with that, we had a set of revised plans that, September 7th, a set of plans that included in those revised plans were the comments that were addressed with the Horsey-Witten comments, comments by the Fire Chief, Conservation Commission concerns, and comments by the traffic consultant. Traffic consultant, Jack, who's here tonight, the whole team is here, by the way, if you have any specific questions on any, any item here, we've got the whole team tonight. Traffic consultant Jack responded to the traffic review comments by Van Ass, and he received a second review letter asking for one item, some essentially more data collected from the existing roadways. That data was collected, and I just got that from Jack yesterday, and we submitted it to you yesterday, Brian. So of course, we don't expect Van Ass to have reviewed that, but I think that will be, that was the only item left, and I think that will be a quick review for Van Ass when they, when they get around to having a chance to look at it. LEC, Claire's company, LEC Environmental, they were busy submitting the environmental impact statement that you may recall we had originally asked for a waiver on, and we withdrew that waiver, understanding it was of great importance to a lot of the butters and, and the board. So that got submitted. She put together a wildlife study. That was something that was also asked for, and that was submitted. Responded to all the wetlands comments and has been working with the Conservation Commission, including attending a meeting last week with them on this, on this project. That is moving forward. There are only a few items left on that to be addressed. We, after submitting those plans and the response letter that we put together for Horsey-Witten, they, they have been, by the way, they have been excellent. They've been very responsive and very quick with their responses, and we appreciate that. They put together a second review letter, and it, it put to bed a lot of the items originally, there were, there are a few housekeeping items remaining, and we just wanted the board to know that we don't have any problem with any of those. So those, we haven't submitted a new set of plans addressing those yet because we want to, we would like to put together one final set of plans or hopefully final set of plans that addresses all of the remaining items. We should point out that the water in Sewer is now proposed to connect to Brick Street, something that the Water and Sewer Department requested. One of the other things that did is that enabled us to, the Water Department had asked us to loop the water main, and you may recall there was some directional drilling that need, that was required under a wetland system to loop that water system. Now we've avoided all the wetlands impacts with it, and it will tie into the water, the water main that's up on Brick Street. And again, that, that wetland, the wetland impact or under the wetland impact has been eliminated from the project. So we have not received, I, I did go back and forth, we emailed the Fire Chief, and he received all of the information that I had sent. He was kind of meant to give us all the specs on the fire apparatus, and we ran the turning, the turning program on it, and Van Ass reviewed that and came back and said that that is satisfactory. So I have not heard from the Fire Chief, I don't know if the board has. So I just wanted to, that, everybody who knows about the chief.
I know there was also a question about the grade of the entrance to one of the streets.
That was a comment from Horsey-Witten, from the traffic consultant.
I think everybody.
Yes. So the Concomit did not comment on that. That was the only one. So yes, that's all been addressed. Now, we had an 8% grade coming in, we had a transition into an 8% grade, and we've eliminated that. That was done to try to keep it as close as we could to the existing grade, but we've, because of the response we got and specifically wanting to address the Fire Chief's comments, we have eliminated that, and we've provided that turn, the soft transition into a slope that's less than 5%, which is exactly what he asked for. So we reviewed all of the other, the other intersection to this one and the other one and those. This one did not need to be taken care of, but we tweaked this one a little bit to just make that an easier intersection for the chief to handle.
Does that kind of summarize what you were going to go through? Do you want?
That summarizes what I want to go through. I can certainly go through any specifics the board would like me to, or again, we have Claire and Jack here if there's traffic or environmental concerns, we can have them individually address those.
Okay. You mentioned water, so I'll mention this, I think I mentioned this in a previous session when you were here, but just to mention it specifically, you know, August the 23rd, I had to look up the date, I did attend a Water and Sewer Commission hearing about, speaking specifically about this project. There was a decent discussion about, a number of the residents in the area talked about water quality, had talked about what they experienced now. There was a lot of discussion back and forth about why the Water and Sewer Commission believes that happens, as well as some options for people to, if they're continuing to experience those conditions, to set up, I'm going to call it a consultation, about whether there's additional, I'm going to misstate this no matter how I say it, but a relief or a flow valve at the, at the house level to assist with that. So if anybody would like to watch that meeting, again, it's the August 23rd session. I know that I can't remember everything that I said two months ago in the meeting, but that's why the recording is there. So with that out of the way, I know the, I know you've been meeting with Conservation, talking through those things. The, I think the primary major issue, I think, that we left at the last, the last meeting was the, was it the AC/EC issue, correct? Is that?
That has been resolved, and if you'd like to hear from Claire, she can come up and address it. She, she's been working with them and worked with DEP and got the response that we were comfortable with, and I believe that Horsey-Witten is now comfortable with that.
I believe so. So for the record, Claire Hokel, wetland scientist with LEC Environmental Consultants, to address the wetland fill in AC/EC comment, we received that comment from Horsey-Witten as well, so we reached out to an analyst from Masdeep Southeast Region to get confirmation from them as well. And we were instructed that the performance standards for wetland resource area alterations under the Wetlands Protection Act are ultimately allowed to a certain extent at the discretion of the Conservation Commission so long as a project is a limited project. So because we filed our project as a limited project, that affords the Conservation Commission discretion to approve the work so long as, you know, they consider the magnitude of the alteration, the significant of the project, and cites the interests to the Wetlands Protection Act itself, the availability of reasonable alternatives. So the Commission specifically requested us to further analyze and alternatives from Brick Street, so we looked into that as well, provided that information in our supplemental information, the extent to which adverse impacts are minimized, and the extent to which mitigation measures are provided. So we included all of that information in our packet as well, but ultimately, it was confirmed with DEP that it's the Commission's decision whether to approve a project in that instance.
When do we expect Conservation to discuss and make that determination?
We just had a meeting last Tuesday following the holiday Monday, and we just received Horsey-Witten comments at the end of the day yesterday, so we haven't had a chance to review or comment on them, but from what I understand from a brief review of it, there's minimal outstanding items to address there. So I believe we continue to the first meeting in November, I'm at a loss for the exact date. I want to say maybe the 13th, it would be, I think, the second Monday of November. So.
14th would be the Monday.
14th. So ideally, we'd like to prepare responses to their second review letter, any revisions that are necessary for that in, ahead of that meeting. So I'm unsure if they would vote on that meeting, but at least, you know, we would get through another round of the comments by then.
Well, Claire, is there any additional questions related to wetlands, wildlife?
Could we go through that environmental impact study and the wildlife habitat study?
Sure.
I do not have the environmental impact study on yet. That was quite a document, and that was actually sort of an interdisciplinary hole for both of us.
Fortunately, I don't have it with me.
Okay. I can touch on the wildlife habitat evaluation, so that's specific to the wetland crossing itself. So.
So just the crossing, not the entire?
Not the entire, well, the wildlife habitat evaluation itself is directed towards the crossing. The Brick Street alternative was another sort of, we took into account the wildlife habitat in that evaluation as well, and ultimately, the Brick Street alternative. Do you have a plan that might even show like the overall site?
I don't, but I can.
If you look on the screen, you have some of the.
Okay. I could just sort of try to point out on the screen what we're talking about with Brick Street.
This'll work.
Oh, thank you.
It kind of, it kind of works.
All right. So Brick Street, the terminus of Brick Street is here, and what the Commission members asked us to do is just further evaluate what it would look like to have an alternative accessway from the Brick Street to allow for eight lots that are located here, and so here's our wetland crossing generally. What we looked at, or what we determined was that to get the Brick Street entrance and to be able to avoid other wetland systems that are located within this portion of the site, these blue line, uh, blue dots are actually generally where vernal pools are. To try to avoid the wetlands and the vernal pools here would have been physically impossible from a construction standpoint and from a safety standpoint for emergency vehicles, school buses, just constructability of the road. So generally, providing access to this area from Brick Street was eliminated completely from our alternatives. We did provide what it would look like if the Brick Street was able to afford the additional eight lots, and it would essentially cut through this way and create the lots in the area that we consulted with the Conservation Commission with prior to submitting our project, and it was determined to be a location for the lots that was really undesirable because of the sort of terrestrial juxtaposition for the upland wildlife that would be utilizing the vernal pools. So that was sort of the summary of our alternatives analysis for this Brick Street, was that utilizing that entrance for the eight lots would be a larger impact to the wildlife habitat that we're trying to preserve through our current wetland crossing location. And then I guess just to sort of follow on the wildlife habitat evaluation for our wetland crossing here, our conclusion there as well was that the crossing itself would result in a diminutive impact to the overall wildlife habitat and connectivity availability because we have these sort of undeveloped forested lands and wetlands to the south here, and we also have some undeveloped areas to the north. I believe these parcels are conservation land, and with the preservation of open space in this whole eastern portion of the site, that allows for the wildlife connectivity to continue between our undeveloped sites to the north and south. So with that Brick Street alternative, if we were to move forward with that, that would ultimately create a physical barrier for any wildlife to continue to migrate from one side of our site to the other.
So in essence, by having the open space across the entire, I thought northeast of the site to the back of the site, that basically provides a continuous path? Is that the?
Right.
So to, to follow up on Alan's question, a wildlife study was not conducted on the entire parcel, only on a very narrowly focused portion of it, correct?
Correct. In accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act, that's what a wildlife habitat evaluation focuses on, is the wetland resource area's capacity to continue to provide wildlife habitat functions. So it focuses on the resource area itself.
And also certainly, just like to point out that certainly, if you have any questions on the, we don't have the impact report in front of us. I know you guys all got that. If you have any specific questions, Claire and I could probably address any questions that you have on that.
Obviously, it's a giant document, so if we don't have questions right now.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we take some time to review it, if we have questions from that specific document. If we could send those through Brian, then those can be sent to the applicant prior to their next meeting with us. If that makes sense for everybody? Okay. Okay. Anything else for Claire in terms of wetlands or wildlife while, while she's standing up here?
I can always get back up if there's more later.
We will not be shy of letting you get your steps in.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Stay closed just in case.
Thank you. I know I have a couple of points here. Do you have any additional questions to discuss at this time based on the materials that we have and the updates that are in process? Or do you want me to continue to go down my checklist here?
I'll go first.
Okay. Well, on the plan set that you have, do you have the, the traditional subdivision plan, not the cluster one?
Yes.
The conventional?
Yes.
The conventional. Sorry, I was looking for the word next to that.
Give me a second, I'll flip to it. Now, there's two sheets, the, the lot layout sheet and the grading and drainage sheet. It's the lot layout sheet, okay?
I think that one works perfectly. Yeah. So again, this is the conventional subdivision layout, which is required as a, this is what in theory could be built without a cluster to allow for the cluster to take place at the site. Just for clarification, we did reach out to Town Council as to how hard is the board supposed to evaluate the conventional subdivision plan in terms of which lots make sense, which lots are, are there 44 lots here, or does Lot 12 not really make sense because it's entirely wetland, or something like that?
No, we, well, they, these all meet the requirements of lots in the zoning requirements as far as what needs to be upland and contiguous upland.
Yeah.
So every lot meets that requirement. And what we did is when we first started out on this project, we came in and met with Mr. Giuseppe, and we asked them specifically what they would be looking for for, for the degree, I mean, it's not, it's not expected to go and do an entire subdivision. I mean, it's not, it's not expected to go and do an entire subdivision for this conventional plan, but we went pretty close to that. You can see that we've graded out every roadway. We've shown a house, this actually shows a septic system on each lot, although now we know that we'd be tying into sewer, so the septic that's shown is kind of irrelevant at this point. So you can see that the, every lot has a house and a driveway, and it works with the roadway and the grading for the roadway. Again, we have essentially the same crossing that we have in the plan that's in front of you.
Yeah.
The cluster plan, and if you review the plan very closely, there are no other wetlands impact. So this was a situation where we had to stay under 5,000, the magic number, under 5,000 square feet of wetlands impact, and we're able to do that with this layout as well.
Yeah.
So we've also positioned, if you do review these areas that are, that are shown as detention basin areas, stormwater control areas, a lot of these are the areas that we actually ended up using in the, in the actual plan. We didn't need all of them, obviously, because we weren't doing anything up here, so a lot of these.
Yes.
None of these were utilized. We did test pits. There's test pit information in each one of those, so we were able to explore every one of those areas to determine that, yeah, this is a viable spot for us to be able to do an infiltration basin.
Yeah.
So.
I didn't mean to put you on the defensive there, I just know that.
No, not at all. I'm happy to explain it. But I think it's an important part of this whole thing. Like, when we met with the neighbors originally, we went over that in great detail, you know?
One of the, I have a list of 16 or 17 things here related to the project, and one of them was the counting of those original 44 lots. And since they did get that note back from town council as to how we can, how we should look at the lots, wanted to make sure that was said in the open forum and discussion. And that is page number one on the plan set?
This is, this is sheet G1. Now, the layout, the lot layout plan that shows how it conforms to zoning is the sheet L1. So L1 and G1 are the two plans that address the conventional layout.
And just as a point of information, if there, if we do review those sheets and there are any lots that the board wants to look at specifically, we can do that and discuss it. But Bob, as you mentioned, you went through a lot of the, putting the houses on the lot and making sure that they all conformed to the zoning code for the conventional plan.
Exactly. They need to set back requirements, et cetera.
Yeah. So I know we have additional items going with traffic, then you have additional items going with conservation. What other processes do you feel you have in process? That's a redundant statement, I apologize. And what do you feel is an appropriate timing for all of those?
As Claire said, she has made a lot of progress with the Conservation Commission, and it's probably, as far as getting everything back to them and then having a meeting with them, we're probably looking at a month to a month and a half to get a real good feel on how comfortable they are with eventually approving it. They may, they may wait until this board approves or disapproves. I don't know exactly how this town does it, but a lot of towns do it that way.
There is always a little bit of who's going to probably approve it first, even though we are supposed to be able to act independently.
Right.
But we do try to, we do try to communicate the best we can. Everybody has their own communication struggles at various points.
So that's the first major item. Like I said, we have no problem with any of Horstley and Witten's housekeeping items that they had in their, in their last review letter. So this is going to be easy for us to take care of those items. Now, there may be a couple of slight plan changes based on how we have to address the Conservation Commission comments, so that'll all be done within that timeframe. That'll easily be done before Claire needs to go to the next meeting. The other item that we will, we were made aware that we will have to do is we're going to have to set up a meeting with the Water and Sewer Commission and go to them for, I believe, not only review of the design of the water and sewer, but also permission, officially get permission to tie in, even though they've asked us to. So that's on the, that's out there. Of course, that becomes moot if this board doesn't act on the cluster plan or anything. So we would prefer to wait till after this board has done with their review of this project, before we went to them.
And we, and there's no sewer design changes that would impact the plans themselves in general?
I don't believe so. The layout is shown on them specific, they may have specific things that they may ask us to add, like pressure release valves. There's going to be, there's going to be force mains, so there's going to be a lot of specific things that every town wants things to be done differently. So in general, the layout will probably be okay, but probably, now that you say that, probably makes sense for us to meet with them and then let them know what we're doing and let them take a look at our plans, and then hold off, if they have anything major, we want you to move this line 300 feet that way, then we'll be able to put that on the plans for you guys to.
Okay.
To review finally. So that, that makes a lot of sense.
I certainly don't think that I need to know where every valve goes.
Yeah.
But, yeah, if there's going to be major changes, we don't, what we don't want to do is have that cascade to you and have to come back for.
No, thank you.
Modification, et cetera.
I appreciate that.
Yes. Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant on this project related to any of the open items that we have, understanding that there's still discussions going on about traffic, still, I had to go back and forth with conservation and sewer?
Only thing I can think about, I don't think we've talked about anything yet, about any possibility to do any type of traffic mitigation in any way on Pine, on the road, I mean.
I would defer to Jack, our traffic consultant, and your traffic consultant on that. I think from the numbers that are being generated that there's nothing required, there's not going to be anything required out there to, based on the low traffic numbers. But Jack, do you want to address that, please?
Thank you. I do see the, please raise their hand in the meeting. We'll go to the public comment section shortly.
Hi. I'm Jack, your traffic consultant here. I've known Jack for a long time. I'm not going to presume that he's going to do it today.
If everybody who's in the Zoom meeting can please mute your microphone, that would be helpful. Thank you. We're getting a little bit of feedback at our end. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Again, I'll admit to say tonight is what I did and what we submitted, and that we will work with your peer review consultant as well as the town, as well as anybody else that you, that you asked me to talk to. When I, I saw the peer review comments before, it was a question of, there were a lot of assumptions, and, you know, now that the school is open again and everybody's back from vacation, why don't we just go out and do the count over again on Pine Street? So that's what I did. I put a machine down on Pine Street, right out the site entrance, and I put it down on the holiday, and then obviously, we picked up the Tuesday and Wednesday, October the 11th and 12th, and I submitted that you have that documentation. Then the second thing I did is I compared the new counts from October 22 with the ones that we had done back in May 22, and we found that the traffic volumes in the fall were 15.7% higher. So what I did is I took the traffic trade move accounts that we did at Crane in August, and we increased those by 15.7%. And then we went back and we looked at what we had done for COVID back in May, and we had increased the other counts, those counts for COVID by 8.7%, so we did that again at this location. And then we took all those counts and increased them by 1% per year over seven years, took out the normal growth that would occur if this portion were not done, and we got those numbers for a baseline condition. And then we assigned our traffic from the site to the roadway network the way we had done after we had done the traffic counts for Crane Street, and then we did the projected, and then we analyzed everything over again, and then we found that although there was some minor increase and delay, there was no change in the levels of service that we had predicted. And I'm not trying to get ahead of just review, but I'm just letting the board know what we did and our opinion on this, and hopefully, he'll have a chance to take a look at it at some point in time, and perhaps we could talk about that. Oh, okay, you have it right up there, Michael. All right. But pretty much that's it.
So talk about it with the plan reviewer next meeting.
Is that what you said?
The updated counts, you said, so the number that you saw was that the difference from summer to fall was a 15% increase?
15.7%, but that was over the course of 24 hours. If you look at figure two there, you'll, you'll see that, you'll see that, you'll see that that does not mean that the peak hours both went up 15.7%. That was, that was, they were tighter than that because, you know, when you have work patrol within the offshore park and things of that nature, that didn't jump up to 15.7%. I'm going to hold up.
This is the, the chart with the red line and the blue dotted line?
Right. The red line and the blue dotted line.
So it looked like the, the peak hour actually shifted earlier, and it's on page four.
Right. You know, the, the peak hours.
The peak hour in the evening shifted a little bit earlier.
Right, that's correct.
And then, and the peak hour in the afternoon, in the morning, hit a little bit later.
Yeah, but rather than looking at each hour, because that was on a snapshot date, maybe it would be different if it were next Wednesday as compared to next Thursday. So what we did is since we knew that there was a difference of 15.7% in the fall, we increased the peak hours both by 15.7%.
There you go. There's the.
And obviously, Jack will take a look at that and give us his feedback on that.
So this is the difference from May to October in terms of traffic volumes measured at the site?
The machine was put at the exact same location, there was no difference. There were people out there walking, there were some, you know, it's funny, I walk every time I go out there, and there are more people walking out there than there are running out there. There's not a ton of pedestrians walking, but, you know, you'll see, if I go down there for two hours, you definitely will see a pair of walkers or maybe a jogger. There are some people out there that perhaps you'll end up walking in here, because it'll be a lot safer in here. When we come, we come, what's that spelled? In the kids' belt. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Otherwise, I know we do have members of the public who would like to speak, both virtually and I assume personally.
With regards to, so I've started the tracker. Do we review that with the applicant?
We can.
Okay.
I think that it may make sense prior to closing the public hearing. If there are any conditions that we feel will determine how we vote on a particular project, then we should discuss those conditions prior to closing the public hearing.
Yeah.
For example, this would not be the case in this project, but if a building, if there was a question about whether a building would be able to be open 24/7 versus a different hours, and that would have impacted our decision, that's something we should discuss with the applicant prior to closing the public hearing, rather than a standing petition that wouldn't necessarily affect our decision. Does that make sense?
It does. I guess I'm wondering more about, there are certain steps, I guess, that need to take place. The planning board needs to approve the setbacks, which I believe that's going to be a condition. There are things that are pending, as mentioned briefly with the fire department, but there are things that are also pending feedback from the highway department.
Is that, is that as terms of, was that as terms of the grade as well?
No, this one, well, one of them was one of the waiver requests, Cape Cod burn versus granite, and I have that, somebody is supposed to be consulting with the highway department as to whether they feel that Cape Cod burns are acceptable.
Okay.
Things like that, that's another one. Allow for the road to be accepted. That needs highway department approval.
Or be officially accepted at town meeting.
The.
If I could just interrupt, I think it requires a waiver. So when we met with the DPW originally, they were, they were questioning whether or not they wanted it. They said, we might want to take this as a public road. And I said, well, you can't, because the zoning requirement says it has to remain private. So it would be a waiver that I think, I believe this board would have to consider to enable the DPW to possibly take it in the future if the town votes to do that. We don't care either way. It was just, that was a request by the DPW.
Because they're going to have a homeowners association to take care of the open space regardless.
That's exactly right. There will be a homeowners association anyway.
Did we, there are things, and I'm not sure, did we get the open space maintenance plan? Did I see that?
We did. Oh, that's another, I forgot to, that was included in the letter that we sent back to Horstley and Witten. It's a two or three page document, and there's an open space maintenance plan.
Okay. That, I think, needs to be reviewed by highway as well.
Absolutely.
So there's just a lot of moving parts that I'm tracking that we haven't addressed?
Thank you. You're doing a better job than I am.
Would you like to share that on the screen now?
I can. I also have some questions as to what specifically.
Okay.
We should be tracking, but I'm happy to kind of go through these right now.
Why don't I go through the list now?
Okay.
And I'm sure Steve will be patient as we go through those conditions and that issue tracker. I see thumbs ups on the screen, so.
All right. Give me a second.
Mr. Hunt, he's a former member of this board, and he's gone through this multiple times.
One of the items is the, one of the things we discussed at the first meeting was what the board wanted to do with the open space, whether or not it wanted the town to own it or keep it as a homeowners association or whatever. This board decides, we're fine with that too, but I believe that's something that this board has to determine.
It is something we need to determine. We, we could triple confirm this, but I believe that the preference of the town is for it to not be under town control at this time.
Okay. Whatever. Like I said, whatever you guys decide, we're okay with that.
Do I have permission to share?
You should.
You should be able to just share a screen at the bottom of our.
Sorry.
I do not appear to have the ability to give it to you. Is it not?
I'm getting. I'm getting, honestly, I'm getting, I've done this numerous times, I'm getting a screen I've never seen, and I cannot find the file that I want to share. This seems to be really the plus.
That is not helpful?
No, it is not. I apologize. Everything I've got in system preferences, grant access, it seems to indicate I do not have access.
If you want to share that with me?
Sure.
I can potentially share that. I know I'm able to share.
Okay. How do you want to get it?
Through the town emails.
Got it.
So while that comes through, is it going to have an objection if we open up for public comment at this point? Okay. Obviously, if anybody in person here would like to come up and make any further comments, please feel free. I know Mr. Horns, being in the Zoom meeting, has had his hand up virtually for a little while here. So Steve, if you'd like to unmute and ask your question, please, question or questions, please go ahead, and I'll do my best to answer or defer to the applicant to provide some context if they can.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Horns, 66 Pine Street. I had a couple of questions, and I apologize for being late. I'm sure, you know, possibly they've been answered, I was on another call. I had a question on the traffic studies. From what I just saw, it looks like the traffic study was potentially done on Plain Street and Pine Street at that intersection there. That's actually where my house is. I'm on the corner of Plain and Pine, and I have never seen any traffic study equipment out since I've been here for three years. So I'm concerned about that. So I'd like to know when that traffic study was done on Plain Street. And I'd also like to find out if anything was done on Pine Street and 123 at that intersection because that's, that's the biggest concern from the neighbors on Pine Street here. So just those two.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Just to confirm here, I believe that the, there's been a couple of sets of data collection that have gone on. One was in May, and one was just, I think, a week ago in mid-October. And the intersections that were studied were at the site at Pine Street and Pine Street and Crane Street. So I do not see any data from Pine Street and Route 123. So I don't believe that was included in this study. I don't think. Bob, if you want to come up just to speak to that, the placement of the equipment at the intersections, just to confirm that, because I think you had May, and then you said that that was on, was it October 10 through the 12th, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But to answer the question, I think it was, well, what about the pine at Plain Street? He is the equipment out at that intersection, and he's lived there for three years. All right, to answer that question, we did the turning movement counts at that intersection on June 1 of 2022. Well, I did park in the car, and I did count all the cars and all those turning movements between Plain Street and Pine Street on that day, which was a weekday. So, no, I didn't have any machines down there. The only machine that I put down was at the site because that's where I was interested. If that answers the question.
So was a person on the scene count at that intersection?
Right.
Was a person on the scene counted that intersection, that person being you?
Right. I was.
Okay. So there would not have been equipment, there would have been a traffic engineer in a car, Steve.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, through you, I mean, I would recommend, I would recommend the board require an actual traffic study and not just somebody sitting in their car, looking at, you know, half a day's worth or however many hours worth. That, to me, is insane. I literally live on the corner of Plain and Pine Street, and the traffic impact for this, for this project is going to be enormous, and I think it deserves a little bit more than somebody just sitting in their car for a couple hours and then counting cars. I think that's absurd. So that'll, that'll end my comments here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I sit down, you're going to know I did more than just count cars.
Yes. I understand, and I know we do have, we do have peer review on the traffic and process. And I know that there have been multiple rounds of comments back to you from that engineer. So.
Mr. Chair, if I can?
Yes.
When you were here last time, I talked about the fact that by putting the line at 154 Pine Street, that every single car that travels on Pine Street from 123 to any house before 154 is not included in your study. And every house that comes from the industrial park in Taunton and comes down Crane Street to Pine Street that turns into a driveway between 154 is also not counted. And I think it's important to do a traffic study to include all traffic, not just traffic at one line at one spot on the street.
To answer the question, we did the ADT automatic traffic recorder right at the site, and that only counted traffic at the site. What we also did, we counted all the traffic on Pine Street and Plain Street, every car turning left, right, straight, and then we counted every car on Pine Street at Crane Street, every left, right, straight. So we counted all the cars at those two intersections in addition to what passed the site.
For what length of time and at what time of the day or evening?
I can tell you that. I don't have it right now. I did it during the morning.
I'd like to have that information.
Right. It was June 1, I did up on Pine Street at Plain Street. And it was August, and I'll get you that for the turning movement counts, and then we increased all those traffic by the 15.7%.
But again, I'd like to know what time of day and/or night and what length of time because you've, you've got a line that's counting data effectively for 48 hours, and you're sitting in a car for two hours, four hours, six hours?
I counted from 7 to 9.
It's not apples and apples?
No, no, it's not meant to be. The machine will tell us what the difference is between the fall and then the sun, you know, so, but the turning movement counts tell us what the patterns are. And I'll let your own peer review engineer take a look at that, and I'll respond to that as well as one of the questions you may have as well. But I'll get you a little bit of times. It was two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon to capture the peak hour. It does a 15-minute increase. I did that both Pine Street at Plain Street and Pine Street at Crane Street. We did four hours, 7 to 9 in the morning, and 4 to 6 in the afternoon.
Thank you. And again, I think the most important thing is exactly what Jack just said, just let's address all this through Jeffrey Durk, who's the town's traffic consultant for this project, and just make sure everything was done correctly. We want it to be done correctly as well as you do. So that's, that's why he's there and being paid to do it.
Again, I put this in the Zoom chat, but comments in the Zoom chat are not going to be right into the record. If you would like to make a comment, please use the reactions button to raise your hand. I do see one person there who would like to speak further. Trying to balance people virtually and in person. If anybody in person would like to come up and speak, yep. I'm going to try and do my best to go back and forth here to try and allow both audiences a chance to speak. Again, if you say your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hody, Bradley Jones. I live on 150. So yeah, I just kind of want to know, since you say that the town, doesn't sound like it wants to keep the open space, if we're able to get like a, like a permanent conservation restriction slash allow residents to be able to have access to the land, if that's something that the board decides?
The question of, if the town owns the land, the town has to maintain it, the town has to pay and maintain it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that's, that's the question?
Um, I guess I.
The applicant, if, if the town does not take ownership of the land?
Yeah.
Then the maintenance of that falls under the, would fall under the homeowners association of this development. So that's the decision. If the, if, I believe I have that from the town manager, but I'm going to confirm that, what their preference is.
Okay. So would the, would the homeowners association then decide if other folks other than the homeowners association are allowed access to be able to use the, when in recreational or is that something?
I believe it's required to be public.
Okay. Thank you.
I do see, on the Zooming, I see somebody noted with Bob as the Zoom name, if he would like to join the meeting to state. You don't need to turn on your camera if you don't want to, but I do need your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. That's Bob Butler, 133 Pine Street. So regarding the traffic study, I believe Steve asked also about the intersection of Pine Street and Route 123. And I don't think we've heard yet, like, why that intersection is not looked at. Maybe you think that, like, that would impact a lot more traffic than Crane Street and Pine Street and would, you know, lend to more possible accidents at that intersection. I also had a question on the, on the speed study. It looks like there are only seven vehicles on that speed study. Is that accurate?
Can you provide some context as to which document and page you're looking at?
I just saw it when you had it up, so I don't know what page it was, but I don't have it in front of me.
Let me see here. Let me see. I'm not sure exactly which page you were looking at in the, was it the chart with the two?
It showed a chart, and it showed like the number of vehicles within each, like, speed range.
With the speed range, okay. Well.
Like 25 to 30, 31 to 35, et cetera.
Well, let me scroll this, speed page. If you want to, let's see. What page is that?
26.
26. Different study, of course. Okay.
Of course, put this up, see if it is.
Laura, we may have to have you share this again.
No problem. I figured it out. We're good now.
Okay. So if you want to stop sharing so Brian can?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
There you go.
Is this the chart that you recall or no?
Yeah, if you scroll up just a little bit.
Yeah. So that would be machine data and cumulative percentages of traffic. So Bob, I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but what this chart shows is that 14% of traffic up to speeds 20, 25 miles an hour accounted for 14.2% of traffic. Anything below 30 miles per hour or below captured 71% of the traffic. So there was an additional 57% that moved between 25 and 30 miles, or 26 and 30 miles an hour, which is the predominant speed block as measured by the machines. Another 14% were between 30 and 35, and of the data measured, everything was below 40 miles per hour. Did I interpret the chart correctly there?
Yeah.
Thank you. So where's the chart to the left of that, where the total was seven?
Let me just make sure that the, the traffic engineer agrees with how I'm interpreting the chart here if I'm.
No, you're correct. That's the way you interpret it. The question, I think, is why seven observations? And the reason it was seven observations, I sat there in the, in the driveway with my radar gun for 45 minutes, and that was the number of cars that I got, those sevens. If, if, if obviously it was a real busy street, I would have had a lot more spots to put on the graph, but since the traffic wasn't all that heavy, if it wasn't recorded, I did that 45 minutes, so that's what I had to work with.
And do we have additional machine data in terms of speed?
No, the machine that was put out there was one to, to cut the volumes because that's what was asked for. So we did get the volumes with that machine. That, that machine didn't do the speed by depression.
And then, and that didn't, there was no machine speed in the first study as?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So, so yes, that the speed calculations are based on seven vehicles?
And that was with the radar gun showing that they're precise.
And if we had, and if the board has additional questions about the methodology of the traffic study and the traffic testing, we can discuss that with the peer reviewer potentially in our next session.
That's correct. The, the machine, by the way, doesn't give you great data all the time. If there are two cars following each other, the machine will tell you both of them doing 30 miles an hour. But when I sit there with a radar gun, if the first guy's doing 30 miles an hour, I don't even count the second one. I wait until I have another one because his speed was restricted by the fellow in front of him, and he didn't have freedom. So sometimes the machines and the radar are a little bit different. Not all the time, but a lot of times they do, and that's why you do it the way I do it, not using machine all of the time. And as far as the other intersection goes, 123, I'm sure that your peer review has already looked at that. And if you, if this project was going to raise those volumes by 5%, which it's not going to because you got 123 in it, come on, then you would have to look at it going to be, but it doesn't fall into the structural categories. But, you know, it's up to you and your peer review, and he didn't bring that up in his review the first time, so that's why we picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. So Bob, understanding that the board may ask our peer review and traffic engineer about the methodology here, do you have additional questions about the documents?
Yes. So in that methodology, are you possibly going to inquire about the Pine Street and Route 123? I mean, I don't know if that's ever been explained.
That would be something.
I think, you know, that's been asked several times.
That would be something that we would address, yes.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple more comments. I wanted to know on the water main, whose decision or idea was it to change that to Brick Street from Pine Street?
Okay. I can ask the applicant to come up and speak to that. Is there additional comments that you wanted to, if you want to get them all out, I can answer what I can and then?
I just, I mean, as far as the water main, I feel like that was, you know, one way of, you know, not having to hear the complaints of the Pine Street residents on, on this project about regarding the water main. And now it's, you know, at Brick Street, so no longer a factor, I guess, for the water That was my comment on that.
Okay. And do you have any additional questions or comments at this point? Now, the start.
One thing I brought up last week at the conservation commission meeting was, you know, the possibility of project segmentation based on the parcels, the other parcel that are owned on Pine Street?
Yes.
By this developer. I think there's, you know, a certain square footage of, like, wetlands impact, you know, that could be done on a, one project before it needs some kind of, I don't know if it's called variance or waiver, but I think that's like 5,000 square, 5,000 square feet, and this project here is very close to that. So if the other land is being developed and that has wetland impacts, I would think I would think that should be included as well. I know technically they're not, parcels aren't exactly touching each other and maybe they were purchased at a different time. But I know they were purchased around the same timeframe. So I just bring that into question.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bob, if you could just, I think you may have mentioned this at the outset, but just speak to the decision-making process about Brick Street, as opposed to other, other options?
It's not, it's, it's not that the water is now coming only off of Brick Street. What the water department thought was the best thing to do was, we are still tied into Pine Street. We're coming into Pine Street and we're looping the system out to Brick Street. And there, from, from what I understand, from the correspondence and discussing it with them, they feel that the more, the more water that gets, moves through those pipes, the better it's going to be for the amount of sediment that drops to the bottom of the pipe. And that's what's causing that brown water in a lot of people's houses. May not prevent it, but it's supposed to help it. So there's additional water line being put in by the applicant. All the water is necessary, and that's, that's in order to loop that system, get more water moving through the Pine Street system.
So it's not, you are still tying into Pine Street. The connection to Brick Street is an additional loop.
Correct.
That water department's requesting, so there's still.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Happy to do that.
Okay. And did you have any comments in regards to the, the comment on segment, product segmentation or anything to that respect?
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely, segmentation is absolutely a thing. And it's something that we are aware of. There's only one project in front of this board and in front of me. Just because the applicant owns another piece of land doesn't mean there's two projects going on. There's only one. Now, if, if something becomes of that other piece of land in the future, then that question may come up. I, I have never seen it come up on properties that are separated by a roadway. It's usually on one property. So I don't believe it will, even in the future, it will be segmentation. But I have not even evaluated anything in the other piece of property that, that the applicant owns. So there can't be segmentation if there's only one project in front of everybody, including me.
Understood, thank you. Okay. Mr. Hornsby, I see your hand there again. I'm going to go to the members of the audience, members of the public here with us at the library. Just kind of continuing to go back and forth here. If there's anybody who'd like to talk. Going up as a unit, I guess, if you could both say your names. Sure, John Donovan, 79 Pine Street.
Sharon Donovan, also 79 Pine Street.
I had a couple follow-up questions on traffic. Share the concern about the location. It's, you know, the end of, you know, by 123 gets bogged down on a regular workday with a, without the project. I heard the comment about 45 minute for a duration on the speed study seems like a very small duration and not really representative of a true day. But the question I have related to traffic is, it sounded like the traffic study, this most recent one, the data was taken, started on October 10th.
And then ran for three days, yes.
So is there any reason why, October 10th is a holiday, for most people it is, it's Columbus Day. Didn't know if there was a reason for selecting that as a start and whether that affected any of the data or the averages or even the peaks. So it's a concern, just want that to be considered when your peer review.
It is a consideration.
And that'd be something that the peer reviewer would certainly look at. Okay, great. And then the other question I had was unrelated to traffic. Was on, I heard about test pits at the locations of the stormwater detention ponds. Was wondering if you guys had done any infiltration testing to confirm any of the assumptions in the stormwater design?
I think, I will ask the applicant to come and speak to that. Just for everybody else, just have comments flow through me, so it's not kind of a cross-examination kind of situation, just to.
All right, so it's directed to you, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is it something that?
I'll defer to the applicant to speak to that, I don't. Did you have anything further?
No, I didn't, I didn't.
I just had a comment to make about the traffic study. I believe it said something about the project was only going to add 20 cars. I just want to know how 44 homes means 20 cars. And the other part is with this project, in addition to another project that I believe is going on on Pine Street, that I think it's 18 homes. It's like quite a few cars you're adding to traffic. And it's a very narrow road. I have to cross the street to get my mail. And when there's snow and plows, it's very dangerous. That's it.
Thank you. Bob, if you could just speak to the process and whether you've done any, you mentioned the test, test pits in terms of process for infiltration and.
That's exactly right. So the processes we go, we determine where we want the infiltration basins to be as far as the design goes. We mark those out in the field of the survey and we dig test pits in those areas. And we have, the licensed soil evaluator evaluates the soil, determines the texture of the soil. And the DP Stormwater Management Policy assigns an infiltration rate. It's a very, very conservative infiltration rate based on the texture of those soils. So that's what we, that's what is in the, all of, it's, the, those, all that test pit data is on the plans and the, the test pit information itself is on the detailed sheets of the plans. And that's what closely we looked at in reviews.
Thank you.
Jack, is it okay, Mr. Chairman?
Real quick, I need to answer those two questions.
Sure. Didn't mean to make you keep getting up and down.
That's all right. I need to exercise my age. Answer the two questions real quickly. We put the machine down, yes, on the holiday. We ran the 24 hours on the following Tuesday. We ran the 24 hours on the following Wednesday. We picked the machine up, half way through the day after that. So even though the machine was down on the holiday, it was down because it was very little traffic out there and I wasn't going to get killed. So I put the machine down and that's in the appendix in the traffic house. You'll see the dispatch on, on the holiday in the morning. But I didn't use any of that data in the report anywhere. I just used the full day, Tuesday and Wednesday. They didn't use that part of data either. As far as, you know, your peer review engineer was looking at, the trip generation, as far as the peak hours. And, and people have that question all the time. Well, how can that many houses want to generate 44 if not 88? Well, the thing is, based on the transportation engineer's trip generation report, they all find that not everybody goes to work. I mean, this is before COVID. Not everybody goes to work between 7:30 and 8:30. Some go earlier, some go later. And that's why it doesn't have any relative to the number of views. But I'll let your peer review engineer speak to that one.
Jim, excuse me, could you just let her know that it's just the peak hour, the 20 minutes, just the peak hour?
It's only those that coincide with the street peak hour. So that, that's why.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. I know I saw you had your hand up here. I'm going to ask Mr. Hornsby to speak and I'll go to you next, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'll wait for the water, the water commission when we do that.
Okay.
Because it's related to water. Okay, my question.
Mr. Hornsby, you had a quick follow-up here and I'll go back to people here in the library.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, I got to put my, too. So, so I have a quick thing. What was the, because it's not from, what was the count of the, the vehicle count during the peak hour?
The vehicle count during the peak hour? Let me see, peak morning or peak evening?
Either way, whatever's the highest.
Peak evening. It's looking like it's close to 100 between just before 5 o'clock, just before 4 o'clock. Thank you. Yeah, 99 is the peak between 3 and 4 o'clock. And that's in the October measurements.
That was by the, what count?
That was the machine count done last week. The peak was between 3 and 4 and 4 to 5 was also at 87.
Thank you. The reason, the reason I ask is, the last time I spoke was about 20 minutes ago. And since then, I've, I've counted, I've stopped counting at 30 cars going by. And this is, what, 8:30 at night? So, you know, I, I have two kids, I have one on the way and I have a pretty good BS detector. So I'm a little, I'm very concerned about this, this traffic count on Pine Street and Pine Street. And I'm very concerned as to why nothing has been done at 123. I know you mentioned that, that the board will look into that and I, I'm sure you will. I, I, it's clear they have the machines to do the count, so I don't know why they wouldn't use those on the actual, you know, major intersections on Pine Street. I would recommend that, that those are done before any decision is made. And clearly, I don't think the traffic study is being taken seriously. And I think, you know, I'm assuming the board would like it to be taken seriously. So I, I would recommend that, that you actually get an actual traffic study done.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And I think, as the board has said, we'll ask the peer reviewer their thoughts on methodologies involved. Since I am not a traffic engineer and I don't plan on being one tomorrow. Okay. Turn around here, I apologize. I have my back to everybody in the audience here. We're not talking, we're not focused on traffic in any particular points of, if you'd like to pick them up, you can. This is whatever you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Paul Better go 148 Pine Street. Different subject.
So just.
That's it right over here.
Just to, that, what you're pointing at is the conventional subdivision plans? This is not the layout that would?
I'm talking about the pond. That's going to stay there.
Okay, thank you. Just maybe you're not laying something out or something, it's not going to happen.
No, I'm concerned about the land bridge and, and the water pass-through going underneath. So that's essentially going to build a dam, right? And it's going to have a two-foot pipe going underneath to allow water flow to continue, correct?
I, I'll ask the applicant to speak to the specific design, but it's a crossing, yes.
Okay.
That would, that would be, that would carry a car.
Right. Okay, but it's basically, it's all low, wet ground right now. And you're going to put a big crossing of compacted dirt and such. It's going to obstruct the flow. So my concern being, is the two-foot pipe adequate? And six months after it's there, is it going to clot up? Because once, I, I mean, the pond is of serious concern to me. It abuts my property. If it dries up, it's a real, it's a real issue. So I, I just wanted to, to sort of explore that a little bit, just to see, is a two-foot pipe adequate? And is it subject to ongoing maintenance?
Sure, thank you. Bob, I don't know if you or Claire would like to speak to the design of the crossing?
I'd be, I'd be.
I believe the maintenance question that would probably be, yes, the maintenance of that is covered, would be covered by the homeowners association.
Absolutely. If the road's remaining private and the open space remains in the ownership of the homeowners association, everything is going to be covered by, by the homeowners association. So we absolutely did.
It reflects half of the light up onto the ceiling.
Yeah, it's not doing real well. If you, if you don't mind, I don't know if you can, if the microphone will hear me if I'm up at the screen?
It should, yes. Well, we'll see if that will.
I have exactly the same one, I'm going to work, so. Yeah, it's kind of not.
Yeah, it's, I.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I tried.
Just a different color.
Yeah.
So we absolutely did evaluate this crossing. So when you, when you look at drainage and you look at culverts of this, of this nature, you look at the contributing, existing contributing drainage area and what's coming down to it. And so we have a, a section that, there's a, there's a ridge based on the survey that's somewhere, it's very, very flat through here. But it looks like there might be a ridge somewhere in here where my finger is. Most of the water that hits this wetland system on this side of the ridge goes that way. If it hits on this side, it goes this way into this system. There's very little water contributing to that. We ran existing condition evaluation of this area and we ran proposed condition evaluation of this area. And it would turn out that the pipe that was actually required was less, was less than 12 inches, but we provided a 24 just to be on the safe side, keep equalization. We've examined the downstream cover on this side before the drought, before the drought happened, so it was during, you know, in April, I believe. And we saw that there was literally no water flowing through and no wet, there weren't even wet leaves on this side of the, on the covert that's downstream. There's a, there's a covert on a, on a, on a trail in this area. So we believe that we've, we've oversized that, but it's something that the conservation commission is also reviewing at this time. So that may even get increased even larger. Claire has examined that area on several occasions. My company has examined that area on several occasions and we can't see any flow there. We can't even determine, I would like somebody to tell me which direction it flows in here, because there's no flow. If I, if we were, if somebody could tell us what direction it flows in, it would help us, but we've, now we've looked at it many times and there's no flow. So we're, we're going to work with the conservation commission that, that pipe may increase, but a lot of design and thought has been put into that already. And we believe we've adequately addressed it with a 24-inch pipe. And again, it may get bigger than that. The conservation commission is asking us to look at putting something bigger in there.
And in terms of flow volume, regardless of what you've been able to observe, is that, is maintaining the flow and grade in theory part of the stormwater review that Horsey Witness is doing? Or is that not, not part of that?
They have asked us about that and we've addressed it with them, yes.
I'm not a stormwater engineer.
I wish I wasn't, but I'm.
Okay. I'm going to go back to people attending virtually here. Ms. Salva, you had your virtual hand raised first, so if you'd like to make any comments, please do. Again, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Kelly Salva, 151 Pine Street. I am diagonally across from the 154 entrance and did see the traffic study as it was being put out as I was walking my dog. I also have a concern and just want to make a comment about the 123 Pine Street crossing. Actually witnessed an accident with my son in the car on my way to football practice one day. It was, it was pretty shocking. So I just wanted to make that a point, that that was just one accident right after the last meeting we had that the traffic consultant actually talked. It was probably a week after that. So definitely want that to be put on the agenda to study that. As far as the water department's concerned, I didn't make the water meeting, wanted to, but I was away. Did they talk about the drought issue? So it's one thing to have brown water on this road every single day for the most part, but did they talk about the fact that the towns had a, had a drought all summer long and it was in stage two? As opposed to now, I guess it's in stage one, whatever that means?
Let's see, if we're referring to the meeting that I spoke at in August, that was in prime drought time? There's a prime time for that, I'm not sure. There was discussion about the drought. There was, there was discussion about what happens now versus what happens in non-drought conditions? In terms of the water and sewer commissioner went into kind of, laid out the logic and the, or attempted to describe why water turns brown in the area? Why it happens from time to time, what they do to address it? And why, and what that does? And what they see when they do try to clear that? So I'm not going to try to reconstitute that from memory two months later.
No, no, no.
But I would, I would encourage, if you'd like to, I think, I was on there for probably half an hour, probably 45, 35 or 45 minutes into the meeting on. on August the 23rd, I think I said?
August 23rd.
So, if you'd like to see that, to watch that back, I recommend that you do. And there was also a discussion about some additional steps that homeowners could, in the area, could potentially take in terms of, I'm gonna call it a release valve. I don't think it's a release valve, what the term is, to potentially help clear water in their own homes. I'm not, if I say anything more, I'm gonna say the wrong thing. So I'm gonna stop.
That's okay.
You know, plumber.
No problem.
Nope. I've done a lot of things. I apologize.
I would just warn any new residents, you know, over there, that I've already had one hot water heater die, and it's, my next one is dying two years later. So I'm just letting it out there, just so you know. I hope somebody's gonna cover that someday.
It is the water department's position that adding additional usage and flow through Pine Street should overall reduce the amount of brown water the area sees.
Okay, even in a drought, okay.
While that may seem counterintuitive to throw more houses in an area that seems to experience water problems, their position is that low flow at certain times of day is a contributing factor to the brown water. And if you put more service in the area, you create more regular flow and less settling incident. That is a very short version.
Yeah.
If you'd like to go hear the long version, you can go back and listen to that, the exchange that I had with them.
Yeah, I think my neighbors recapped that, so no, I appreciate that. And then as far as the wetland area, I actually walked, there's a trail that abuts the property that's beyond where all of the plans are. And I actually walked the trail, it goes out to the rail trail, walked around to Briggs and walked back. There is quite a bit of flow from the very beginning, and you can see it, there's, there's a bunch of washout just based on the amount of rain we've had over the last month or so. There's a lot of washout right in the beginning. So if you're past the property where that pond is to the right of the plans, in between, there's the trail start. So it's not anywhere near where it was discussed where that pipe is gonna go. So I just wanted to point that out, that I'm not sure who's walked the property or who's walked the land abutting it or anything like that. But that was completely washed out, probably two or three feet deep from where the plans are going to be starting to that pond area. So I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't think there's anything you respond to there, so I'm just gonna keep going, if that's fine.
Yeah, unless you specifically want me to address something. It was kind of, it was good input. But I didn't see any questions.
Turn around here. I know we have one other person in the Zoom meeting that'd like to speak. Sir, please. You just state your name and address for the record, please.
Casey Lauren, 141 Pine Street.
Thank you.
Just a couple of little notes I had. I tried to look through some of the new information that was posted online. The, I think the only things I got through were the environmental impact study and part of the habitat study.
It's a lot of reading anyways.
It was. It was a couple hours just doing those. Before I get to any of those, just kind of going through the list, I got a couple of things that came up just from us being here today. First question is, just for clarification on the new plan for the water main. I know originally, if I remember correctly, it was essentially gonna loop in, start on Pine and at One Road, loop up through, and then go back to Pine. So it was basically, it tied into Pine Street in two spots?
That's correct.
And I think the, now it's also gonna have a third spot at Briggs Street, if that's the way I understood it. I just wanted clarification for that.
Yes, that's, yeah, it's tying into Pine Street twice, and then it's looping through to Briggs.
Okay.
Per the water department's recommendation.
Okay. I also, the same, obviously we're beating a dead horse here, but the traffic study being done for the intersection of 123 and at Plain Street as well, I think is very important also. One question that kind of came up as we were sitting here. I know the, this whole thing with doing the wellness crossing and stuff sort of hinges on that limited project waiver or being eligible to be a limited project. I was just curious whether the conventional layout also needs to meet the criteria to be a limited project in order for the cluster to qualify for that? Does that make sense? I don't know if I said it right.
I understand what you're saying, and I believe that they did that deliberately.
Okay.
And that AC/EC designation is being out of my conservation.
Okay. A few other things. The, just kind of curious why the habitat study? Well, I guess I understand why, I think now, why it only is on just the wetlands crossing, but curious if there's the potential for something similar to be done where all of the houses and stuff are gonna be? As I was reading through some of that, it talked about like turtle nesting areas, makin' otter dens, large trees with cavities for nesting areas, I assume, things of that nature. And it said there was none of that, just in that small location? But I, as in a butter, I am very confident there probably is all of those things elsewhere that's gonna be disturbed. I mean, just on my piece of property, that's only three acres, I see, we've seen as many as six blue heron at one time. We have turtles nesting everywhere. And, you know, lots of large trees that have either died or have open cavities in them and stuff like that. I'd just be surprised if we're not losing a bunch of that stuff, potentially where the houses are gonna go. And the just another kind of note, I guess. One thing I read in one of those, I don't remember which one it was, but it talked about the change of the character of the area. And currently, anybody who's been down Pine Street knows it's a lot of, you know, larger, at least two-acre lots with a whole pile of different style houses. You know, there isn't two houses on Pine Street. I don't think that look the same. They're, they're all very different. And obviously, this is gonna be a development of a bunch of, probably pretty close to cookie cutter, houses all stacked next to each other. So, in my opinion, that is quite a difference in character of the neighborhood. I don't know if everybody else agrees, but that was my opinion. And then one other thing that I saw in, I think it was the environmental impact study, was that there was no areas of concern as far as historical value in the area. And I know, I don't know much about it, but I know there's a sign almost directly across the street from where the project's gonna be at 154, talking about a historical battleground that took place there. I, I don't have all the details on that stuff, but it just seemed like it might be worth noting that clearly something happened in the area because there's a historical marker sign on the road that talks about it. I think that was it. That was all I had to mention. I don't know how many actual questions were in there, but I wanted to bring up some points at least.
There's a couple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire, if you have one, just to clarify, I believe you went over this at the outset or earlier, but just to clarify, the wildlife study that you performed is specific to the wetlands district? So the wetlands areas on the site are covered, but the in-between areas are not? Is that correct?
In a way. So when we do a wildlife habitat evaluation, it's in the context of the Wetlands Protection Act, which applies directly to wetland resource areas. In this case, the BBW, or Bordered Vegetated Wetland that we have on-site. When we do the evaluation, it's directed to the impact area and the specific alterations that are occurring in the resource areas. So that's where, when we go through a few of the pages on sort of a checklist of, I think you brought up the nesting habitats and things like that, that really is specific to the impact area of that wetland. So you are correct in that, like, we weren't scouring the whole site for, you know, these turtle nesting habitats or any things listed in the sort of underlying checklists here. However, a lot of these checklists, or a lot of these items are specific to wetlands and what you, what kind of habitat you will find in either bordering vegetated wetland, a stream in a 200-foot riverfront area to a perennial river. You know, these are the kinds of items that we're looking for in the context of what's protectable under the Wetlands Protection Act. So the rest of the site, you know, we're not impacting the wetlands out there. And any upland areas that are outside of jurisdiction of the Wetlands Protection Act are not necessarily under the purview of our evaluation here. But I do also want to expand, because I think before when I did mention, you know, we solely looked at the impact area for, in regards to things like nesting habitat-specific, important habitat features. We do continue to evaluate that impact in the context of the entire site's ability to allow for migratory passage or other important habitat features like habitat continuity. So we did evaluate the rest of the site as far as an overall habitat landscape, but again, to reiterate, we weren't really, you know, looking around for specific features that were listed in the Wildlife Habitat Form, because that's limited to our impact area.
And was the historical aspect of that document, was that something that you were looking at? Or was that kind of other people involved in the project?
I believe I looked into that, and that information was found on a website that's provided by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. I think the website's called MCAP. And it stores and documents all of the historic locations and features that have been recorded to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So that's what we looked into. And it did identify that there are historic sites just to the southeast of the site, I believe. So I don't recall if that specific battleground you mentioned was on that list, but we did identify that there is a historic site, I believe, just a few hundred feet away.
Okay.
But off-site. So nothing was identified on the site.
Okay. Do you think that's MCA?
MCAP, I believe, do you?
I don't worry about it. I think you can find it if you just look up Mass Historical Commission.
Yeah. It's listed in our report, and I believe I included attachments of the sites that we referenced and their, the codes that are associated with those sites.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good to understand where the information's coming from.
Yes.
That's helpful. Okay. If anybody here would like to speak, I'm gonna have you wait one second. You have another person on the Zoom meeting here as I continue to try and work both sides of my brain here. Mr. Mcnevin, you have your hand up here in the Zoom meeting. I'll just ask you to state your name and address for the record, please. If you'd like to turn around your camera, you can, or you cannot. Your choice.
Okay. I'm actually Gwen Mcnevin, and I'm at 15 Plain Street.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I just wanted to talk, again, the traffic. I know everybody's talked about it, but I just want to emphasize that, for me, I live on Plain Street, but it's not just the car traffic. The car traffic is hands-down important, but there's also a lot of other traffic that goes on between Pine Street and Plain Street. And I think with the, this development, it'll probably even just increase. And it really needs to be taken into consideration along with the cars. Because on Plain Street, as you all well know, we've got in the elementary school, we've got the baseball fields, and in the school in the spring, we've got kids playing baseball. We've got cars lined up and down the street. You know, I just want to bring up, we've got the, I know you know this, but it's really important to think about that we have the Wheaton College kids, and they're jogging. And I've lived here for over 20 years, so I've watched them. And they jog in, in groups, you know? They're jogging sometimes 10 or 12 kids at a time. There's a lot of activity on these roads that isn't just cars. And in the summertime, we have bicyclists that go through, recreational, and sometimes there are tons of them. I couldn't even count, there's so many. And they travel through. And a lot of the traffic on Plain Street, I think, is because it's connected down to Bay Street. So there's this great pathway for them. We also have a lot of motorcyclists that'll come through in large groups as well. A lot of walkers, and we don't have a sidewalk. We have kids, right, with their bikes up and down the road as well. So, you know, I hear people, and I totally agree about the cars, that this really needs to be looked at, because I've lived here and I've seen accidents occur on the corner of Pine and Plain, because people will take from Pine onto Plain, they take this left-hand turn, and for years, they just don't slow down. They just like, they just cut over. And I have lived here, and when I am turning from, I have to think the store in my head, but when I am turning from, you know, Plain onto Pine and I'm taking a right, I always, I've learned over the years to stay to the far right, because people just cut. They don't take a true left, they just kind of cut over, you know? It's, it really is a very dangerous corner. Or it can be, not every single time, but you know what I'm saying. But really do not just look at the cars, but please look at all the other types of traffic. The pedestrians, the bicyclists, the kids, the joggers, the, you know, all the, when these people move in, that's 40, 40-plus houses? And a lot of people buying these are gonna be younger people, bringing children, who are probably gonna be going to the LG North School and probably wanna be enrolling their kids into, you know, Little League and stuff. This is all gonna just increase all this traffic, you know? So it really needs to be thought about, because we have no sidewalks, you know, for the amount of traffic that we really do have. And, you know, safety is really gonna be an important part, you know? People walking dogs. I just, I've looked here, I've seen it. It is something that we have to really think about, you know? Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And if you could please lower your virtual hand there.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Otherwise, I'm gonna see it out of the corner of my eye and keep thinking that you're ready to speak again. You certainly can if you want to, but thank you again. Okay. Anybody else here would like to speak? Peter, I see your name.
Yes, I found this from the Sun Temple Inn. The historical word set on the Pine Street in Creasey is a lovely neck bike, which part of the team built, where it took place in August of 1676.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. Anyone else further here that'd like to? Claire, do you have a question?
No, no, I was just pointing to you.
Oh, just to make sure I saw you. So if you need to please jump in. Just, your name and address again for the record to make sure that our minutes make sense. Or yes, they can.
Hi, John Donovan, 79 Pine Street. Just a follow-up question. I know it was related to the wildlife study, and I know there was an explanation about the Wetlands Protection Act. And the concern was about the limited area study for wildlife. So I understand that explanation, but it seems like it's still disregarding all the non-wetlands portion- non-wetlands portions of the project, of the developed project. And so, for example, you know, this bat roosting trees, there's a lot of endangered species of bats that are in the northeast and that, you know, if you disregard the wildlife for the balance of the developed site, you know, that's a concern I know many of my neighbors and I share. And I just was wondering if the purview of the wildlife study could be expanded to the developed, full developed site.
That's, yeah. I won't speak to the applicant on that. I'll say that the report covers what it covers. The board can also look beyond the report to larger sites.
Okay.
Outside of the report. Now, it'd be appreciated if it's considered anyways and, yeah, the fair review. Unlike my other, my other neighbors, I haven't had a chance to review the environmental type of stuff, so I don't know if any of that's covered in that or if it's just the standalone wildlife study. Okay. Thank you. Clear with that context? Is there anything else you'd like to add? Or is it, is that the report that you provided covers the Wetlands Protection Act or anything else you think would be best left to the board to evaluate?
Yeah, I suppose I would just note, as far as the Wetlands Protection Act, what we did with the wildlife habitat evaluation was specifically requested by the Conservation Commission and their jurisdiction covers the Wetlands Protection Act and the local Norton policy. So the Wetlands Protection Act itself affords protection for these wetland resource areas and areas within 100 feet or the 100-foot buffer zone. Anywhere beyond those areas unfortunately is not under the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission. So from my understanding, from their view or their ability to request for action beyond their jurisdiction, I'm not sure if they would be able to take that on themselves. So that's sort of my own knowledge. I'm not entirely confident in what kind of jurisdiction you're, or follows either. But I just wanted to sort of clarify the conservation side of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Just, can I just want to follow up on that?
I'm not sure, it's just, you know, where it's a concern, it's shared by almost, almost unanimously by all the butters. We just would ask that the planning board consider expanding the purview of that. Wildlife is certainly part of the character of the neighborhood and would like to consider.
So, like 100 acres of the clearing, isn't it? Close to, but no?
Very. I mean, I change that.
Okay.
The rest, thanks.
I'll just say that the study that was provided, requested by Conservation as regards to their jurisdiction in terms of the Wetlands Protection Act, the board is looking at the site as a whole. I don't think that having a full, I don't think that it's probably not feasible to walk every square foot of the site and look for rabbit hutchies and things of that nature.
I'm not talking about--
Not to minimize it, but--
Sorry, Jeff.
I think that--
Follow-up comment, please.
If you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm not talking about rabbit hutchies or even common animals. Just to clarify, my, my comment and concern is about, you know, here the comment about five blue herons, you know, I see bats every night. You know, it's, it seems like it's being minimized, the concern, and it does affect the character of the neighborhood because it is the reason why a lot of us, you know, like living on Pine Street. It's a lot of wildlife. So it is important to our view of the character of the neighborhood.
Understood.
Besides, you know, the law of, you know, what's under, you know, Wetlands Protection Act.
Understood. Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Anything you'd like to respond to in terms of that, to, if you don't think there's anything further to respond to, that's fine.
Yeah, I prefer not to respond to that. It's that thing.
Understood. Thank you. I do see another virtual hand raised here. Bob, if you could, again, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Bob Butler, 133 Pine Street. Just a real quick question. I noticed a, in the application materials, I got meeting notes from 1992 for Brick Street. Looks like lot size or dimension requirement. Just wanted to know what the relevance of that was for this project.
Sure. Thank you. Let's just clarify that one. I had to make this stand up again.
If you, yeah, don't worry, I'll stay up there if you want.
Sure. So town staff will see that one.
So John Thomas had noticed that--
The Conservation Director?
Yes. Had noticed that Brick Street had, on the GIS map, abandoned, which we needed to confirm. And so that was the confirmation for it being 1992 rather than 1982 for the town meeting.
So it was crossing Ts and dotting Is in terms of a prior street that was never built?
What was it then?
Abandoned, apologies. Okay. Thank you. So yes, that is the clarification, why there is a, a document from pre-internet in the file. Yes. Was that pre-internet?
On that vein, I noted within the documents, there is an ANR, it references Wood Road, yeah, Wood Road, but it does seem to be really, it's, it's on Pine Street and I'm not quite sure why the ANR site plan is in there.
Well, that was their original document. That was also the one that referenced the abandonment as well, so--
Okay, so those two items are related then?
Yes, this was from '93. And so when we went to check, it didn't say in 1982, so which is why we asked the applicant to look into it. That way we can confirm whether or not they could dismantle the road or, you know, make sure it's abandoned.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Laura?
I think so.
Okay.
Were we asking that question in regards to the ability to connect water in sewer or the ability to add and access viabores? What was the rationale for digging these up? What prompted us to pull these out?
I believe Conservation had looked at it and noticed that date, and so I just want to confirm that it was abandoned.
If you don't mind, I might be able to clarify.
If you must, please, thank you.
So Brick Street, at one point, it was known as Wood Street also. That's why you're saying that. That's what we understand. There was a, the right-of-way for Brick Street and some old plans shows the right-of-way coming right down through to Pine Street.
Yeah, the GIS map shows it still.
Exactly. So Brian brought to our attention that it was unclear based on, there was a plan that was done, I believe, for these two houses that, that are on Pine Street where that road used to go right through those lots. That, this road ended up, there was a plan on record showing that Brick Street having been abandoned by the town. And it referenced a 1982 town meeting where it was abandoned. Brian did great research along with others and found that that was not 1982, it was 1992 when that was abandoned. So there was a road through here, it's been abandoned by the town. There's an excluded area that's described in that discontinuance document and that, I believe that's this area here. It allowed for the person who lives here, right at the end of Brick Street, to still have frontage on Brick Street. So that, I hope that clarifies--
Yeah, thank you. No, I was just trying to figure out if it was related to the water and sewer hookup and/or access that Conservation had asked you to look at.
Neither, just an old town--
Yep.
You know, trying to clarify some bookkeeping with the town and whether, when and whether or not it was actually discontinued.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Nothing like a mystery.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else here?
Free charter, 145 Pine Street. Couple of notes that came up during the discussion and, so originally, the residents of Pine Street, you know, presented a letter to Pine Board and certainly, a lot of those issues have been addressed through the course of this as well as other issues, you know, brought up by other departments and such. I think the lady here mentioned open issues and took to minds that we probably, I don't know that all of our issues have been addressed. Now, I didn't have the foresight to really bring a letter to this meeting. Is there a good way for us to, to, to bring up, go through our letter, address questions, bring them up to the board prior to the next meeting?
So we all still have access to your letter and our, we have a platform called Permedize, which has all of the documents related to this--
Yep.
--project all in one place. So that letter is there. As you see in front of me, this is the actual sheet of paper that I took notes on when you read in your original letter. And I came down with 16 points.
I can tell you've been working hard for it.
Yes, exactly. So some of them we have covered tonight, some of them we haven't, some of them we've covered in prior sessions, and some of them, like noise during construction, that would be one that we would probably discuss when we discuss conditions for the project.
Yep.
So it is clearly in front of my mind in terms of how it's being addressed and, but if there are any points from the original letter that you're not sure, you don't know if, you don't feel we've covered sufficiently, if you aren't sure when we're going to discuss it, you can please feel free to highlight those whenever you can.
Okay. And I could post those or email them or, obviously, we can bring them up in this forum, but, you know, we don't do this that often.
Yes.
Probably be good to address them before the--
Currently, we have the letter--
Yeah, it's actually on screen up there.
Okay.
So if there is anything specific from the letter that you'd like us to focus on kind of outside of the course of our discussions, I would just highlight that and, if Brian's okay, you know, you prefer--
Okay, that sounds good. I still need to go through it, it's just, a lot of, a lot of the topics we've obviously covered here and it's probably good for us all to go through and make sure we've got the ones that we still feel, either there's, an answer was provided to one of the peer reviewers, maybe we didn't see that, or--
Exactly.
--embedded in one of the big, you know, letters. Okay. Second one, speed study, just one small comment on that. It looked like the graph that max speed was 40 miles an hour.
That was in, that was during the study period? That is not a, that was not a machine 24-hour count? That was a person count in a specific time period? Yes.
Yep, just commenting, it was probably a good day for Pine Street. We do get people whipping down the road a little bit, so, so just a comment--
I am very familiar with people not following the posted speed limit by my house. If you've ever been down John Scott Boulevard--
And it's interesting, and sometimes it's on a Saturday night, you know, you get somebody on the motorcycle. So the time period is difficult to, you know, catalog, I guess. But just that, that comment that, you know, that, I don't know if the study needs to be broadened, but that people use the road on a irregular basis.
Understood.
To second Paul's comment about the water flow under the road, the potential impact to the ponds. I think the discussion was about the pipe size, but my comment is in general about impacts to work on the property and how it might impact, you know, at least we see different years, but there's a lot of, that's all of the water that goes under that comes from that or portions of that property. And so has there been studies specifically, not, not just related to the crossing, but specifically about that? And secondly, if there's any, let's say, two years from now, we find the water flows changed, is there recourse? Is there, you know, what is, what is the, what do we do if something that was done inadvertently, perhaps, not knowing, affects the water flow in the future?
Sure.
And that might not be playing--
Yeah, the flow of water on the site is covered by the stormwater plan throughout the site and that's something that's peer-reviewed by other engineers that are doing that with the Conservation Commission and to a point with us as well. So that's being reviewed in terms of the stormwater management within the site and kind of the flow of water through the crossing into the pond, something that specifically they're looking at with Conservation.
Okay, so if you had better, better question to address through them and through any of that analysis they've done so far.
Yeah. In terms of a remedial step, I'm not sure if I have any context to provide you with that much.
Another one, related to the water change, you know, Pine to Brick Street, this is probably also a water department question, partially, but has there been any engineering analysis of the impact that of, on Pine Street? I did sit through, I did, you know, participate in, on the water department meeting that you spoke at, you brought up a lot of the issues that we had discussed, that we've raised. I got a little bit of the sense that, that, you know, water is not a science necessarily in, as far as water flow, there's variation in how people use it and there wasn't a real firm sense, or there was a general sense, low flow means sediment comes out of the water, something happens and it gets stirred up. Okay, that, that makes sense. But has there been any, you know, real analysis done here on the impact, potential impact of this flow pattern to Pine Street outside of the water department? Do they have consultants?
The water department would be the one who would have managed any of that process. And I agree with that and then the additional information that they said in the meeting about, when we get, when we get a report from Pine Street, this is what we do and this is how it clears it up, which further gives evidence to this thought process. So I'm glad I wasn't the only one there on the meeting, so thank you. Glad to think that I raised the points adequately, but I think they're definitely the people who would have any further information on what studies have been done or could be done potentially.
I mean--
For my part, I have, we look to the water department to provide their input on what the impact will be on the network and that's what, they're saying that they think this would help Pine Street.
And I don't know that it won't, you know, it's, it just--
It feels weird, I understand.
I don't know about that. I mean, there's a certain logic to it, it's just, you know, I didn't look at the water flows, I'm not a water engineer either, but, you know, I just got a sense from talking to the water, or talking and observing that meeting, that there was a bit of sort of finger in the wind, kind of, you know, this is probably the way it's going to go because this makes sense, but rather than a formal analysis. And so I have some concerns about, you know, what if we do this and then in the future there's a worse impact on Pine Street, then, you know, you cannot do it at that point. It's a much better, even though I know our, our traffic engineer's gotten a bit of gut tonight, we have a traffic engineer doing an analysis and that's a good thing. And so, you know, it wouldn't be a bad thing to do, you know, have a water engineer do the water analysis as well.
Understood.
And last thing, I just want a second or third, the wildlife study, you know, we see an awful lot of wildlife in that area and my wife and I, it's kind of a hobby, so we observe, we see, we have the turtles that nest in our areas, we probably share the areas. And we see otters and, you know, periodically, there's a lot of things that are periodic. And so it did get, I did get a little bit of a sense that the, that the study was-- study was somewhat limited, and, you know, that might not be a correct interpretation, but, but I guess I would then, I'm just seconding that, and requesting that there be a more broad study of the property, not just limited to the required areas.
Understood. Yeah, I would just say to that point, that the study that was done was the one that was requested by Conservation.
Yep.
So they would probably be the body with more jurisdiction on wildlife and conservation impacts. But to, not to speak for the applicant, but in addition to the wildlife study, that their plan for the site in the cluster layout, not the one that you see there, by allowing the entire back half, as the map sits in front of me, to be continuous across that site, that provides a continuous area of open space, which in theory would be better for wildlife than another plan. So, that's, so that's what they kind of said at the outset of the meeting. So, it's not a, obviously, not doing anything on site would be best for wildlife. That's the question of what, out of the options available for the site, what is the, what is the choice?
Well, that certainly, I think the comment is more that there might be some missing information.
Thank you.
Anyway, thanks very much.
Thank you. There were a few things there, Bob, and I think, is there anything that you'd want to respond to right now? I'm not sure if there really was.
I'm not sure either. I would just say that, I do, if it's okay, I'd just like to, we keep going into this wildlife analysis of upland areas that are outside the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and I'm just, I'm not clear on what the ends would be for us to determine if there was a turtle on an upland area. I just don't know where, what that would lead to. I think it's come down an odd trail, where certainly, property owners have rights to develop upland areas to some degree, within the scopes that the top, that the, within the parameters that the town has laid out, and just because there may be a turtle on this area, I'm not sure how that would, how determining that would change anything of what we're proposing.
Understood. Thank you. Okay. If there, anybody else would like to come up and speak, otherwise, I would ask, Laura, if you can get your sheet ready here?
Sure. I'll turn around, 145 Pine Street. And actually, what I want to ask, I think, is something that you've already planned, and that's to really vet this, the original plan, and that it is really, you know, forty-four lots, or some other lots, especially after hearing that, that they couldn't even put the street through here, but, you know, it looks like there's houses there. So, I just, the plan is here to really vet that. And I guess also, assuming at some point there's going to be possibly open area there, I know this would be certainly a future thing, I don't know if there can be rules set in the town or something like that. I'll just say, I have a second house, it's in a dysfunctional condo situation, and I know if we had an HOA taking care of curbs and land and stuff like that, nothing would be happening. And, so I don't know if there's town rules that get put in place, or what kind of rules, if, you know, the future goes that way. First, I know town might possibly buy, but I just wanted to...
The operations and maintenance plan for the open space is something that the applicant has submitted, and something the board can review and make comments on to that respect. We cannot make a board agree on anything. In terms of the homeowners association board, I think we've all read the horror stories in those respects in various formats, which I understand.
That's what I've experienced.
So, I apologize for you having to deal with that in the context. But yes, I understand. And in terms of the, the open space, that is something that, you know, that's part of our review, is the maintenance plan.
Okay.
Okay. So, Laura, thank you for pulling this up. This is the colloquially known as an issue tracker, that the board began to start using a few years back, just to track items that we discussed, to make sure that we keep an eye on them. So, Laura, do you want to run through these? Do you want to, I don't know if you want me to drive, if you want to drive?
I'll drive and take guidance.
Sure.
If I could just offer, what stands on here right now are things that we've discussed specifically in meetings.
Yes.
So, there was a lot of, a lot that happened with regards to traffic stones, and the peer review response, and then another response from the traffic, Mr. Gillan, and those have not yet been included in here. So, anything that we really have not discussed in meetings. So, I noticed one of the butters had made a comment with regards to how we plan to mitigate noise during construction. I have just added that, since we've now discussed it. I may be missing things, so if you see something
That's fine.
that's been brought up and is not here, this is generally in chronological order as it's kind of been reviewed. So, it starts with the initial review that we got from the planning director, and things that he told us that we would need to take care of. I've expanded the initial report to include waivers that had been requested, so that we could keep track of whether or not they had been granted, and anything needs to happen there. The items in yellow are items that are on our tracking list that need to be addressed. And then, I have added an additional tab to keep track of whatever project conditions that we've set as we were doing them. And I just, I would appreciate some guidance on a few things, I was just unclear, and you can see some comments as we go through.
Sure.
If you don't mind. The very first one, within cluster development, the planning board shall set the setbacks. Horstley-Witten has made a suggestion as to what's standard. I have it as the site plan will need to be changed to address those, and it will also need to be a condition, I am assuming, and I've marked it as not yet resolved.
Yeah. I don't think that that would necessarily change this to the site plan, because that's talking about the houses.
Okay.
Which don't exist now.
Got it.
But it would need to be something that we approve.
And it would need to be a condition, correct, since it's not currently set?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. Within the cluster development, planning board shall approve the ownership?
Yeah. Yeah. At the moment, it's sitting with homeowners association, and they will confirm that with the town.
All right. In the event that the open space is conveyed to a homeowners association, there needs to be an easement granted or restriction to the town to allow control. And so, I've marked that as no change to the site plan, condition needed, not resolved.
Yeah. And by resolved, you mean, when we put it into a condition?
When it goes into a condition, and it's set, and we don't have to discuss it anymore, is what I would consider resolved.
When it has a why there, we don't talk about it anymore.
Yes. We need to approve the open space maintenance plan.
Yep.
And...
We have that, and we should review it.
We need to talk about it.
If we have questions, we should bring them up.
Yep. So I've got that as being a conditional item as well, or an item requiring a condition. With regards to signs, in some of these, I did read in the responses back and forth between the engineers and the peer reviewers, identity signs had been added, but we didn't talk about it, so we didn't actually put the results in here, but I will. There's a lot of those similar to the stormwater management plans, that just need to kind of get addressed.
Yeah.
Do signs need to be put on the site plan?
I believe they would be, yes. They would be on the site plan, once they're finalized, and locations are finalized.
Any conditions needed?
I wouldn't put that as a condition, I don't think, unless there was a...
I was wondering if there was going to be a development sign at the end, kind of, welcome to Val, Val, what's this, Valdor?
Valfor.
Valfor Farms. I didn't know if that was planned.
I don't think that we would put a condition on it if it was.
Okay.
Other than to make sure it didn't interfere with site triangles, but that kind of goes without saying.
Okay. The next is based upon the Horstley-Witten...
Cape Cod versus Granite.
Yes. So, this needs to get addressed with the highway department, and I don't know whether, who needs to initiate that, whether it's us or the applicant.
Okay. Brian, does highway use permidize effectively?
Yes, they can sign off.
Okay. If you want, if you can make a note that you would like them to sign on, on Cape Cod firms versus Granite. And if the DPW does not want Cape Cod firms, then that's something that, Bob, am I correct in assuming that that would be something that you would be willing to address within the site plan?
Yes, of course. We, just so the board knows, we did discuss this with the DPW right at the outset of our initial meeting, and he verbally granted us the approval to do that, but...
Paperwork is paperwork.
Exactly.
Understood.
Does it need to be addressed in the site plan?
TPD until we get the paperwork.
Okay.
No conditions, and not resolved.
Okay. There was a waiver to allow fill greater than eight feet within the right of way, Horstley-Witten...
That's still open, we're talking about it, so we don't need to, yeah.
Site plan does not need to be addressed?
It's in the site plan.
It is.
So, it's still being, it may continue to change.
Got it.
So, I'm not going to waste mental thought on it yet.
All right. I did see this had been...
That's been changed.
Addressed, yeah. Design modifications have been made to address the grades and the curves. Would we consider this satisfactorily resolved at this point?
I believe we're still waiting for the final.
Okay.
But it should be.
Got it. Waiver of the dead end. I believe we're waiting on chief to make that determination.
Okay. Yeah, I think that ties into the other, they were waiting for the final review on the changes with the fire department. If that's part of it, then the board still needs to grant the waiver. Speaking personally, I would lean on the fire department's opinion on whether the waiver should be granted.
Okay. Does that need to be a chain, well, it might, if they say no?
If they say no, then that pretty much would not be a problem for the entire site plan.
Okay. Special conditions?
No. Actually, I apologize. It's a specific waiver, so it should probably be, I would, I don't know if it's a condition, but it's a specific waiver that should be considered.
Okay. I have the waivers listed in a separate tab, and...
So if it's in the waiver section, then we can allow for here.
Yes. Okay. We need to decide whether we're going to allow one lantern on each lot versus streetlights. Horstley-Witten made a recommendation that additional lights be...
At the wetland crossing.
Put in at the wetland crossing. That's a decision we need to make.
Okay.
Does that get addressed as a site plan?
That would be addressed in the site plan, and the wetlands crossing is still being reviewed via Conservation.
Okay.
But if we have a strong opinion on lights as they sit now, that's something we should share with the applicant.
Okay.
Is that something that we feel that we've mentally reviewed enough as a board? Do we feel comfortable with the lighting as it was described on the site plan, or do we want to take some time to look at it before we make that determination?
I'd like to discuss it. I think that lantern lights are only turned on and off whenever the homeowner wants, and certainly aren't on from dusk to dawn, the way their streetlight would be.
And so, I live in a cluster subdevelopment that did not install streetlights. There was a post light at the intersection of two streets, and there were one at the mailbox, and they, the bulbs died out, and nobody has claimed jurisdiction over them. So, when I report it to National Grid, they tell us it's not their purview, and when we report it to the town, they tell us it's not their purview. So they have been out for twelve years. So, and I can tell you, we have a wetlands crossing, we have a bridge, it is overhung with trees, it is insanely dark, it is also on an S curve, and we have installed those little solar things along the bridge to try and...
Aide it?
Yeah. I have taken, almost taken out a neighbor on more than one occasion, because we only have sidewalks on one side of the street, and people still feel compelled to walk in the road with the dogs on leashes that you don't see, and it's, it's dangerous. Not necessarily in the areas where the homes are, although we don't have lanterns, postlights at the end of our street. So, we are very, very dark. The only time I'm very concerned is in the water areas. So, I would like, from a safety, peace of mind perspective, I'd like to see some more.
Okay. Bob, do you have a plan that shows where a light would be on the site with us here today?
No, there's nothing shown. We anticipated it just being at the, I think it was described as at the drive, at the end of the drive, so no, we don't have it on.
Okay. Are there lights planted at the wetland crossing at this time?
We do not object to that in any way.
Okay. Given that it's something that the peer reviewer mentioned, and it may be something that we look to, I'd make a suggestion to that, to that effect, I think, if that makes sense?
Would you like us to put this, to get it on the plans somewhere? Is that what you're suggesting? We don't have a problem with that.
That, I think that's what I'm, I think that there's a feeling that a light's at the wetland crossing would be helpful.
Yeah, no problem. We would be happy to do that.
And if we could put, and to Laura's point, if we could put a note that those fall under the jurisdiction of the homeowners association?
Right.
To make that very clear, that would be...
They could be on a separate...
They have to be on a separate meter.
That would be great, that the homeowners association is responsible for everything.
Okay.
I can't help you.
No, I know. Oh, I'm fine. But thank you.
Okay. So, just a digress.
Okay. The next one is a waiver to allow for two trees planted on each lot versus one tree, or forty feet, a total of eighty-eight trees.
I do see that, the, it was responded to, and it looks like there might be a plan for more than just these trees.
So we should...
I've got to go back and look at it, but we need to discuss it.
Okay. We'll save that for another day.
Yeah. Does it need to affect the site plan, does it? Or does it?
Landscaping would affect the site plan.
Okay. Conditions, yes.
It's already on the waivers, so...
Okay.
Waiver to allow the roadways to be accepted as town roads, it was the highway department. That'll be something that, I think the applicant mentioned that earlier this evening, that the cluster needs it to remain as a private, but there was a request potentially from the highway department for a waiver down the road, to potentially allow them to be accepted by the town. So, that would be something to confirm. So, that would be something to confirm, uh, whether that is even something that can be done, or whether that breaks the rules of the cluster. So, that's probably something that I would, um... Brian, I'll try and write that up, so you can forward that to Amy if that works. So, you can put that on, uh, the TIM list.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, hang on. I jumped.
Just a question, how many of these do you think we'll run through this evening?
Uh, the stormwater ones, there's a ton of them, and I'm gonna bypass them, so that'll help.
Okay, so it's not good to look at the number?
No. It's okay. Hang on, I just wanna assign this to you. Okay. Let's skip all the stormwater.
Stormwater, yeah.
Yep. Because I do see they have...
I love those standards.
They, there's tons of them, and I do see they responded to. There is one thing in here.
Okay.
Horstley-Witten made a note that since the project disturbs one acre land or more, they're required to obtain coverage, I'm assuming that's some sort of insurance coverage, construction general permit issued by the EPA. Since that is here, should that be listed as a condition?
I don't know if that should be listed as a condition. I do not know how that coverage is determined, and whether that's a prerequisite to even prepare a SWP. Bob, are you able to enlighten us on that point?
I'd be happy to. Yes, we absolutely are going to require an NFT's permit, and which, that's the, the SWPPP, the SWP is associated with that. You can feel free to make it a condition. It's a federal requirement, so we're gonna have to do it anyway, but a lot of planning boards do make it a condition anyway, just to cover them.
Okay. Thank you. So, yes, it should be a condition is the, um, if there's a question about whether we should make it a condition, I tend to err on the side of...
Why not?
Why not add a few more lines to the paper?
Good. Thank you. So, right now...
No site change, no, no plan change, a condition, yes.
Yeah. There is a second condition in here, so I'll break that out into a second one. These are all stormwater, 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 stormwater. One of them, we've already talked about, decision of whether to proceed with septic or connect to sewer.
Yeah.
Needs more information. There was concern with the grade of the road at the end of Pine Street, waiver number five. It was addressed with the Fire Department. They confirmed it exceeded the requirements. It was going to be redesigned, it will be redesigned. Do we have...
I believe it has been redesigned to meet that provision.
Okay.
That was highlighted by, I think Bob mentioned, by everybody except Conservation.
Got it. So, at this point, we could consider this item resolved?
I would say it's resolved, yes.
We don't need a condition? Okay. Just going over, the ones that are in gray are ones that we have already covered.
Okay.
At one of the meetings, let's see, the June 28th meeting, Jim had asked what the environmental impact was on the open space, if any, and the answer was it was contingent upon what the board determines, how it's to be used initially intended as passive recreation.
Understood.
But will take guidance from the board.
Okay.
So, I would consider that. Potentially needing a condition, I don't know whether it needs a site plan change.
It does need a site plan change?
Okay.
Because it's just relating to how the open space could be used.
It does or does not, sorry?
Does not require a site plan change.
Thank you.
It ties into the open space maintenance plan and all of that, so...
Got it. At the same meeting, you had a question, what was the standard for the Army Corps of Engineers involvement? We're waiting feedback on Amy Ball. In watching the October 11th Conservation meeting, Claire had indicated due to wetlands fill that the Army Corps of Engineers does need to be notified of the project, and it is done by a self verification notification, but that can't take place until local reviews, meaning ours are further along. We don't have that being addressed by Amy Ball at this point, so I did not know whether you wanted to consider that resolved.
Okay. Yeah, and Amy was any part of the Horstley-Witten team?
Yes.
I'm correct, so, uh, okay. I would consider it resolved.
Okay.
I think some of the, that was also raised to a point by some butters?
Yes.
As it relates to the concept of segmentation.
Correct. And that's for, one a little bit further down. Waiting water and sewer response to address butter concerns. We do have the letter from the superintendent. I will update this to mention the...
August 23rd.
August 23rd.
Yeah. I would consider that, I would not mark it as resolved, since it's something that I think we will be thinking about with the project, but I don't think there's any additional actions needed.
Okay.
We have the opinion of the water and sewer permission under those to the project?
Okay. This is the big one that Horstley...
We'll hit on that one tonight?
Yeah. Uh, the segmentation, if there are other projects, and I just noted in here, engineer confirmed they have not been asked to evaluate any other properties of the owner, I should mention area?
No.
And that's...
It's, doesn't, it's not a condition, it's not a site, something with this site plan.
Right. And should I consider it resolved at this point, since the...
As it relates to this project, yes.
Okay. Acreage was confirmed, this was Conservation. Acreage was confirmed at 135 acres instead of 105, which changes the open space calculations. I believe that has been addressed, if I'm not mistaken?
With CONCO?
I think so.
I don't recall that being...
All right. I'll leave that open. I could probably talk on that. My comment regarding the Alternate Transportation Committee and their engineer being consulted with regards to proposed public parking for the rail trail and sewer tie-in at Brick Street. And I'm not sure if that has been done.
Okay. Bob, going through our notes from a prior meeting, were you able to connect with any from the, the Alternate Transportation Committee, or not?
I believe I did, yeah. It was months ago, where we, I did go back and forth through emails with a, with a woman who was very nice. She asked me some questions about parking and that, in the, right at the end of Brick Street.
In the opening days?
And I blew up the plan and got that to her. I've never heard back from her with regard to that, so I don't know if she's ever contacted the Board in any way, but she never...
Okay.
It seemed to like, whatever question she had, it was resolved.
That was, uh, okay.
Uh, I think the woman you're referring to has resigned from the Alternate Transportation, and I'm not sure who's left.
Okay.
But they do have an engineer.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure of who specifically. I, I will put that down, I'll take ownership of that.
Do you think that that person would be able to forward their information?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will get that.
Traffic is in process.
Okay, so this is just all traffic, and I just made a comment in here.
Yeah.
That's also traffic. Wild...
That's been done.
What, we've talked, do we consider that issue resolved at this time?
Let's just leave it unresolved, so it's not grayed out.
Got it. And then, just the two from this evening, was the traffic study methodology and scope back for the project?
Yeah.
And how will noise during construction be mitigated?
Yeah. Noise during construction was something from the initial letter from one of the butters?
Yes. So, I'm gonna have that as a...
In addition to a few other things that we haven't really talked about in detail, because they're more of a construction traffic interaction and things that we talk about when we look at the decision, when we talk about the conditions itself, but...
Those are the items that I have.
Okay.
Am I missing anything?
I hope not.
Speak now. I think you cleared out the room.
Could I just comment? That's incredible.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm assuming we don't want to go over the waivers and conditions at this point?
I don't think we need to at this point. Is this, um... Laura, could you just send a copy as it is updated this evening to Brian? And Brian, could you just forward that to the Board?
Sure.
In advance for next session?
Do you need that also for the permits?
Do we want...
I don't know if you want to put it in permannized, because you're just gonna keep changing it. I'm just thinking about Snapchat moment in time, and if there are additional items that the Board comes up that we want to add, we leave tonight and this, and at 12 o'clock when we lay down, we go, "Oh, I forgot to say this," then...
If I do that, I'm gonna punch myself in the face.
Understood.
Wouldn't it be possible to put like Google Sheets or something, so it'll more...
I do not, no.
We should...
I do not use Google Sheets.
We should...
Okay.
I have had, I hate that system.
Right.
Sorry.
If we have any, can you, just because this is a Board that is governed by open leading law, if we have comments to add, we should send them through Town Staff.
And not each other.
We should not be sending things to each other relating to a project, and a shared spreadsheet crosses into a gray area that I'm not prepared to mentally entertain.
Okay. Fine.
With the...
Especially at 10 p.m.
At any point.
With all the impact with wildlife and stuff, are we better served as a Board recommending that that open area is not developed at all, and not made to be used at all, so that natural habit, because if we create a walking trail or something that the homeowners...
That is something that we can, that we can...
If that's a big concern, I think that could be addressed by leaving that just...
That's a question, but because of where it is in relation to the rail trail, whether people would want there to be a walking trail is a question.
Right. I'm just saying that mitigate the...
We're not gonna be able to stop people from walking through it anyway.
Right.
There's a lot of trails out there.
There's trails out there already that people may be using, so it's...
I'm just thinking with the concerns of...
Yeah. Passive recreation is the overarching term, so, um, we're not gonna put in like the...
You know, I think, I think we could put in that there wouldn't be playgrounds built, or there wouldn't be sports fields built there.
Leave it natural.
Leave it natural, but walking paths, they're already there. They're literally already gone through there.
Okay. Okay. So, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you running through that. So, yeah, so Brian will pass that along again, uh, not to make, not to make Brian do more things, but that's how we need to do things in terms of open leading laws, everything through, through Brian, as much as it, uh, sorry, Brian.
It's fine. So, with great enthusiasm.
Much fun.
No. No, that's, it's the way that it should work. If we have questions, we send them through Town Staff. If we need to provide information, it goes through Town Staff. So, uh, the only open question that I had that I wanted to discuss as it relates to this project before we move on this evening was in terms of timing, in terms of reviews, and Bob, I'll ask you to come up here. In terms of the reviews that you haven't processed with Horstley-Witten and Van Ness, when do you think would be appropriate time to see you again?
That would probably be a better question for them. Would we, as far as we're concerned with the Horstley and Witten review, we have, like I said, we have no problems with anything they asked us to do, so that's kind of settled as far as the stormwater and engineering and planning board type is, end of it goes.
Okay.
Now, they've also reviewed the CONCO stuff, which is not quite resolved yet.
We, we see a portion of what they're doing, yes.
Yeah, exactly. Van Ness, it's a, um, it's hard to say when they're gonna have time to review it, but it would be a very quick review once they do review it. I don't know how, how long it will take them to get it, so...
Okay.
I would, I don't know when the Board meets again, but we probably need at least three weeks or so to...
Okay. So, we have...
To be productive.
So, all right, we are meeting next week, correct? And that would not be helpful? And then our next meeting would be 15th, the 15th of November, which would be four weeks from now?
Yeah, that's four weeks, that's perfect.
Okay. So, November the 15th, does that make sense for everybody?
We are not meeting on the 8th.
I think that would be the second Tuesday.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I bet you that's an old, got it.
So, just to confirm, Brian, we have the 15th and the 29th? Is that...
I have the 22nd, but maybe I'm just off. No, I do have the 22nd and the 29th.
We don't have...
I think I have a little series that I haven't deleted.
Can we just have the one on the 15th right now?
I can go back and check.
I had put meeting notes, meetings to schedule at the end of, at the end of the, end of the meeting, so maybe you need to, why don't we just say we have the 15th? That seems to make sense to the applicant?
Yeah, 15th, 29th.
Okay. I assume that we didn't schedule anything the Tuesday of Thanksgiving, so that was, okay. So, the applicant feels the 15th is the appropriate time? Do we have any further questions that we want to discuss, or are we prepared to continue to that point?
Motion to continue DEF 139, 13932 and SP 14704 to November 15th.
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion on motion to continue? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Okay. This one is continued to the 15th of November.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much. So, we have the 15th, we have, so, with that, the only item that I had, which I said at the beginning, was scheduling more meetings. So, we have November the 15th.
There.
We have November the 29th. Since there was confusion about the 29th, does that, do we still feel that's the best for our second November session? I would tend to, okay. Uh, and then in terms of December, um, my laptop died here, so I'm gonna pull up a different calendar. In terms of December, there have been some years where we have done kind of just one, thank you, or we've done just one meeting. If we're on the 29th already, um, I mean, do we want to say the 20th of December and try to do just one? Do we feel like we have a lot of things coming in, Brian, where we're going to want more meetings?
Um, I actually have something that's gonna take like six weeks, that would bring this into December.
It would, yes.
So, would that be one meeting?
No, they would potentially be able to come on the 29th of November. And then, the 20th of December, because we would do, we could either do the 6th and do the 29th and then the 6th, the week after?
It seems like kind of quick turnaround, but if there's anything that they have to bring back again, a little bigger window might work.
And then the, the 13th and then the second Tuesdays is a standing conflict for bill, and then we have the 20th and the 27th. If I'm gonna choose one of those, I think I'm choosing the 20th over the 27th.
Seconded.
I, I think that week between Christmas and New Year's is going to be a ghost town everywhere. Brian, I'm sorry, I think you got cut off there a little bit. Do we have a lot of, any, not any, a lot, but other projects coming in which would make having not many meetings in December a problem in terms of having super long meetings?
At the moment, um, we still just have preliminary and two special permits coming in, so, you know, there's no long-term, as far as technical problems.
So, there's nothing big coming up where you feel like we're gonna be shooting ourselves in the foot by only having one meeting in December? So there's nothing big coming up where you feel like we're going to be shooting ourselves in the foot by only having one meeting in December?
There's that and then there's going to be... But that's, that doesn't seem to be new talent.
That's going to be coming?
Yeah.
What do we expect that application to actually come to us?
Well, they just got your butters list and it's going to come out this week, so their application's going to probably be for next week.
So they're going to...
They're going to submit it next week.
They're going to submit their application next week and then notice needs to be how far out?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So it could go into November.
So they would be in the November meeting?
Yeah.
For the 15th and then the 29th? So they're, so we're going to count all and Pine Street in those same meetings? So those are going to be fun? But there's nothing else in terms of
Yeah, there's no long-term projects.
Okay. So we can pencil in the 20th for December? And if we feel after the 15th of November, that we need to do something different, maybe we look at, if something else comes in or something like that, we try and figure out where our plan is, if that makes sense? Are people prepared to look at January or is that trauma inducing for some people at this point to talk about 2023?
Just assume, get it on the calendar.
Okay. Brian, if you want to pull over to January here, if we're doing the 20th...
We have five Tuesdays.
We have five Tuesdays, okay. Do people feel like the 3rd is too close to the holidays?
Yes.
Okay. You guys will need to go up the entrance.
Okay.
Because that way it's going to be blocked with pavement.
Thank you.
Understood. Unfortunately, I need to go that way. I'll figure it out. So if the 3rd is too close, then I would suggest...
You also have a holiday on the back end too.
Of?
January.
Which holiday?
An okay.
I think the 16th is an okay.
Okay. I was going to say, suggest the 17th and the 31st of January. Does that make sense? And if we're on the... And then we're into February and February vacation is, do you know that off the top of your head, is that the weekend?
Yeah, it's always...
It's going to be the 13th probably?
So it's going to be the week of the 20th.
The week of the 20th?
Yes.
So... If we're going to avoid the second Tuesday, then we might want to do February 7th and 28th. So we skip the second Tuesday and April vacation week, or February vacation week? Does that make sense to everybody?
7th and the 28th, we said?
Yes. I'm going to stop there.
Yeah.
But that gives us, that gives us three months. We've done six months at a time at one point. I feel like we're not there yet. And next time we do it, we'll go into the elections and then we'll stop. Because those will be any. Okay. Does anybody else have anything that they wanted to review for tonight's session? Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
So kind of a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.